Let's see for the CFO. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Edward. Can you speak to the community engagement component of participatory budgeting?
Yeah.
Budgeting, sorry.
Sure, sure, Councilman. That will start with our budget development process. As we normally engage, a lot of external stakeholders will also start the external process with the community and will develop workshops. We're also looking at a component of this process to be external facing so that we can show benchmarks against what we collectively as a city determine our priorities and our resource allocations are going to be. So that starts typically with this process. When it ends with the PBB, we start into a budget development process and we'll make sure that we set up a significant amount of external workshops, probably virtually, to engage our citizens and there are going to be an online component to it as well that will roll out.
Thank you. I know that's something that residents are looking forward to, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Fiero.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update, Edward. I was wondering if you could quickly touch on your opinion right now of solvency and specifically how it relates to Measure Z. So obviously, we know that Measure Z revenue is, for the most part, spoken for, right, that has been allocated. If not officially, in some kind of unofficial way, supposed to be going in a certain direction. Do you believe there's a moment in the future where we need to reevaluate the spending plan of Measure Z to assure that we're not spending money we don't have? I know that Measure Z is earmarked, you know, at least in terms of the community for certain things, but if we're staring down insolvency, I know that that is going to have to be part of the discussion. So I was just wondering if you could give us your thoughts on that so that we can start, you know, being transparent with the public as to where we think we may need to go in the future, even if it's just a possibility.
Yes, Councilman. Great question. We actually started the Measure Z kind of looking at it as part of this emergency budget process. We did reallocate and defer some programs, but definitely along with, really across all funds, looking at reallocation of resources. And that's, I think, where party-based budgeting will help with some of the first steps, but certainly engaging the Budget Engagement Commission to have another look at Measure Z and resource allocations, making sure that things that we adopted two, three years ago still make sense in light of the fiscal challenges we have as a city and with regards to sales tax revenues. Just a quick note, we will have an update on the 21st of this month given to council with regards to our sales tax general fund, Measure Z by HDL, so we can have some additional discussion inside on where we see those things going. But definitely, this is the time to continue looking at that fund as well as other funds for reallocation of resource purposes. So we won't lose this momentum and I think BEC is going to be an integral part of that process.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I just think that we're going to have a lot of hard decisions to make and it behooves us to make sure the public knows that, you know, any and all solutions are going to be on the table if we're staring down possible bankruptcy, which obviously, I don't like saying, being the first one to say that out loud, but obviously, we need to scenario plan for all scenarios. So just a quick question, when does, is it scheduled for BEC to take a look at the Measure Z spending plan or is that for our future agenda?
That will be for future agenda. We have a meeting scheduled this month to give an update on the budget and a few other things, and then we'll start intertwining also the PBB process with them as well. I think they'll be integral in terms of their input as well as that process and we'll have an update for them this month. They'll probably look at it in August where we can agenda something like that to start looking at the priorities of Measure Z funding.
Okay, wonderful. I'm glad to see that there's a plan and plan to engage the Budget Engagement Commission and eventually come to us. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of that, some of that conversation will start too next week at the Strategic Planning Workshop as we start looking longer term down the road. So that will be reflected. And that's the, that's really the document, the long-term document that everything else flows from. So that will start next week. Any other questions, comments? Item three. Moving on to item four, Homeless Solutions Update. Hauza Keka.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Can you see me?
Yep.
There we go. Okay. I have a very brief update. I want to give you an update in regards to something that we have been anticipating in the Office of Homeless Solutions from the county. I had mentioned back in January and throughout my updates that the official homeless count report will be published by the county at the end of June. And as of yesterday, we received it. It is 154 pages, so I have not had the opportunity to look at all the details, but I do have a quick snapshot in today's brief update. I will also preface that at the next Housing and Homeless Committee meeting, we do have Heidi Marshall, the new Director of the County Housing, Homeless Prevention and Workforce Solutions Department, to provide a deeper update and a deeper dive on the point-in-time count as well as the new department and the vision that she has. So we'll be looking forward to that deeper dive at the committee meeting as well. But in terms of the report that was published as of yesterday, a quick snapshot it provides, well, first of all, the point-in-time count was conducted back in January 29th, 2020, and it is officially the statistical count that HUD, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, requires continuum of care to have in order to receive federal funds. The point-in-time count was coordinated and carried out by agencies, city municipalities, nonprofits, volunteers, and those who are also experiencing homelessness participated as well. As some of you also participated, we in the city of Riverside had two locations at La Sierra as well as the access center where we were able to, with the amazing help of Shalia Thomas, our site coordinator and our senior administrator assistant here at the Office of Homeless Solutions that planned this, we had a great turnout. In terms of the actual identified number that the county released yesterday is 2,884 sheltered and unsheltered homeless adults and children countywide. There was reported a 3% higher count than 2019. Compared to the 2019, the sheltered count decreased by 5% and the unsheltered count actually increased. Pertinent to the city of Riverside, we had 587 unsheltered individuals that were identified. This represents an approximate 34 increase from 2019. In the executive summary of the report, which I'll be happy to share with all of you via your staff assistants, it is indicated by the county that the overall 2020 point-in-time count increase was attributed to the increase of volunteers that were recruited. There was a 13% increase in volunteers and city leadership across the board. In addition, the county indicated the majority of the increases also attributed due to the count methodology, which utilized web-based technology, no paper surveys, and included additional HUD guidelines, including chronic homeless and domestic violence, and also took in account affordable housing issues as well. So that is a brief, very brief update on this. We are excited to review with the Housing and Homeless Committee additional information when the county presents this. Also, some of the snapshots I wanted to share is that veterans, youth, chronic homeless, family with children and elderly were also accounted for in terms of their exact numbers. And as you all know, right now with the 100-day challenge, the elderly are looking to be prioritized by the county to be, to be housed. So it was indicated that there is about 120 unsheltered elderly folks throughout the county. That concludes my brief update in terms of the point-in-time. I also wanted to give a real quick update and say that the county and the city partnered to ensure that there were additional hygiene stations at the river bottom. The county has placed two additional, or two hygiene stations in addition to ours at the river bottom as of yesterday. So we're happy that those resources are available for individuals experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
Hauza, a couple of questions. Number one is, is, I gotta think, sorry. In terms of, in terms of COVID, are we, how are we doing tracking COVID amongst the unsheltered or the shelter amongst the homeless populations?
Absolutely. I can answer that question. So in terms of our individual projects, our pallet shelters, our quarantine trailers, our access center, we're tracking it very robustly. We have policies and protocols that are following the city policies and protocols and our safety officer. We are ensuring that we are monitoring individuals who are coming through, through temp checks and any symptoms. As of today, for any homeless individuals that are in our projects, we have not been provided with any indication that anybody is positive within our projects and within the street outreach reports that I have received with our partners as well. As for the countywide, I have requested that information and I am hoping to follow up to see the total individuals countywide who are experiencing homelessness that may be potentially positive. I'm hoping to get a follow-up from that.
Functional zero amongst veterans. Are we still at functional zero amongst veterans?
Yes, I can answer that question as well. About a few months prior to COVID, there was the Community Solutions Department or agency that reached out to both the county and the city for the Bill for Zero action, which is to get functional zero to veterans. The county did approach the Office of Homeless Solutions to assist in this project to help get veterans back to functional zero. According to the unsheltered count of the recent reported point-in-time count, veterans are reported to be 112 unsheltered, which is a 5% increase. It seems like those conversations where the county had approached the city has subsided at the moment due to responding to the 100-day challenge for the seniors to ensure that they are not most vulnerable and on the streets. But I am looking forward to starting those conversations with the county and I have reached out to them.
We go back to the, to the, to the data, to the stat you mentioned. So that's, that's countywide? You're saying there's a 5% increase countywide to veterans experiencing homelessness and we're not at functional zero?
My understanding from conversations with the county is not at this moment.
What about within the city? What's our, what's our veteran homeless population in the city of Riverside?
We have, we have reviewed, we have requested homeless management information system data to ensure we get that information and I could follow up on that request. Thank you, Mayor.
And then in turn, how many, how many shelter beds are open right now?
In the city?
Yeah.
For our city projects, we are, for our Path of Life beds, we currently run at a 95% utilization. Those are 15 beds. Our beds in the pallet community are at capacity and our quarantine facility has three beds that are available or three trailers that are available at the moment. And I am happy to say, actually, last week, one of, we had the first permanent exit from our quarantine facility, a woman in her 60s who was able to find shared housing.
And I know that, that we've got some funding available coming in the next week or two, the next couple of weeks, we'll see a, a, a report for especially the federal funding that's coming through. So I'm assuming that we're looking at expanding shelter beds if we're almost at 100% capacity.
Yes, we're looking forward to having those conversations.
Councilmember Melendez. Question on item four, Homeless Solutions Update?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Hospital, for that update. When, when you were mentioning seniors and housing seniors and the unsheltered seniors, generally when you're working with the senior population, where is the placement? Where is the priority placement for them? Is it in some of the hotels and, or is it in some of the shelters? Can, maybe you can explain that a little bit more, more thoroughly for us? And then also, the second part of that question, the county has had that program with the local hotels. How long is that plan expected to continue?
Absolutely. I can answer both those questions. So I'm going to start with the second one because it makes more sense. In terms of the local hotel, so the county has reported as of two weeks ago that they are currently no longer going to be accepting any more individuals into the Project Room Key Hotel. The idea is now to shift into Project Home Key, which is now let's try to go ahead and get people off of the motels and into permanent housing, into a home. So that also speaks to your first question in terms of prioritization for the seniors. When Project Room Key was first initiated, it was initiated to assist the most vulnerable individuals. Those are three. Number one, individuals who are elderly. Number two, those who have very difficult chronic at-risk medical conditions. And number three, any individuals who may potentially be positive or need to be quarantined and high risk as well. So seniors were initially the first priority for the county for Project Room Key, which is the motels. Now shifting into permanent, one of the things that the county is doing is they have utilized the 100-day challenge along with Rapid Results Institute, which is a best practice agency to help guide sort of systematic transformative change. So the county leaders, along with Rapid Results Institute, which is provided through the state as part of their Project Room Key technical assistance and guidance, along with city participation, have case conferencing calls every week. And in those case conferencing calls, the most highly risk, highly chronic, the most individuals who have the highest rate to fall into demise are essentially prioritized. Often, that is the individuals who are seniors. So what are some of these resources that I have been informed from the county is certain, some ones are Section 8 vouchers where the county has utilized their existing Section 8 vouchers to help get individuals who are elderly into apartment buildings. What they have done with this is they have also marketed landlord incentives. I sent out a flyer, it was in our social media a couple of weeks ago, to solicit any landlords who would be willing to receive some sort of a fee or a subsidy to help get individuals who are seniors in their apartment building. And then additionally, what the seniors are also getting assistance from is the Office of Aging in terms of supportive services as well. I have also been informed that some seniors have buddied up and have a buddy-up system and they're also renting and sharing together. There's also through this visibility of this project, a lot of family members have reached out to their seniors and have also requested family reunification. So those are some of the housing resources that I have been notifying.
So are some of these seniors able to work, live with other families if they are renting out a room? Is that what you're saying? Both apartments as one option and also with families as another option?
Family unification. If there is a, you know, a sister or a grandchild or a daughter who has, who is working with the case manager, then the family, then the senior ends up going into that family. Or the senior gets assistance through the Office of Aging, Behavioral Health, county departments, mental health department to help sustain a Section 8 voucher and get into an apartment building.
All right. Thank, thank you, Hospital.
You're welcome.
You got it. Further questions, comments on item four? Go on to item five, pertinent health, safety and security updates. I do believe Phil Pitchford and Stephanie Harvey are going to give us that presentation. Start off with Mark Anis.
Yes. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. Mark Anis, Emergency Services Administrator. I have a short update on COVID-19 response and then I'm going to be turning it over to Phil Pitchford to discuss COVID-19 communications and messaging. Currently, our Emergency Operations Center continues to be activated to a Level 3. We continue to see quite an increase in COVID-19 cases within Riverside County with a 48.7% increase from where we were 14 days ago. The city cases have increased by 41.8% during the last weeks, or during the last 14 days. Last week's report, they were at 38% increase in that 14-day period. Testing continues to increase, but along with that, our positivity rate has increased. Our most recent daily positivity rate is 15.9% and the 14-day trend continues to climb, currently 11.7%. Well above the 8% threshold for positivity set by the state. The county continues to be near capacity for licensed ICU bed space. Here in the city, with the largest number of ICU beds, we've been near, at or over capacity with our hospitals continuing to utilize their surge plans. ICU utilization countywide currently sits at 94% as of yesterday's reporting. The county continues to experience the highest hospitalization and ICU COVID-positive totals so far over the past week. Last week, when we spoke countywide, there were 403 COVID patients hospitalized. Yesterday, that number had increased to 495. Nearly one-third or 161 of those patients is in one of our city hospitals. There were 109 COVID patients in the ICU countywide last Tuesday and that has increased to 130 countywide. Nearly a third of those ICU COVID-positive patients are in our city hospitals. We continue to encourage all of us to do the following to limit the spread and to help our healthcare system. Mask up. Wear a face covering. It's easy, it works, it's required. And I can't make it any clearer to avoid social gatherings outside our immediate household. Large groupings or parties where people are together for a prolonged period increase the likelihood of spreading COVID-19. And I suspect we'll see many additional cases due to the July 4th get-togethers. We need to continue to practice social distancing and regular hand washing. And we ask that the public remember an at-capacity ICU affects all of us, our residents and our businesses and employees within our city. For those that would like to get tested, the county has made a testing, has made testing site appointments easier to get through the use of online application. So I know last week, one of the councilmembers had a question about best time to call. They now have a online form that you can fill out to schedule your appointment. And we have a link to that on the city's webpage. So we have a link to the test site on our city webpage, which is riversideca.gov/covid-19. That concludes my presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Phil Pitchford to discuss COVID-19 communications and messaging and then I'll stand by for questions.
Wait, Mark, can you hold on? Did you, did you have any slides that you, in, in your presentation, when you were talking, did you have anything that you wanted to put up on the screen? You're, yeah, you're muted. You're muted. Mark, you were muted on that. Did you have any slides that during your talk that you wanted to show?
I did not have slides this week, sir.
Okay. Usually you have a, an update. Good night, Phil.
Hey, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. I'm Phil Pitchford, your Public Information Officer. I'll be providing the communications update today along with Marketing Officer Stephanie Harvey. Excuse me, if you could put up the PowerPoint, please. In 35 years of communications, I've never seen a more sustained and intense communications effort. We started out at a sprint and it's kind of turned into a marathon at this point. So we've been working in a, if you could do the next slide, we've been working in a joint information center every, sometimes every morning. We're now at three times a week. That includes myself, Police PIO Ryan Railsback, Social Media Expert Caitlin Billharts, Scott Brochus for Riverside TV, and we strategize ways that we can carry out the objectives that are enunciated during the Emergency Operations Center briefings. We do this in our Joint Information Center. In the interest of time, I won't go through every one of those, but you can see some of the strategies that we try to implement. I think it's important to note that we're, we're looking at two different kinds of communication. We're communicating for awareness. And I think on a scale of one to 10, we're probably an 11. If you are, if you're following all of our social media, you're probably, you're getting an average of nine messages a day from the city of Riverside. Hopefully, that doesn't cause you to unenroll. But we're also looking at communicating for changing behavior. So that's also a much more difficult nut to crack. We'll discuss a little bit about that. You know, what we have underway in terms of changing behavior specifically when it comes to face coverings. Next slide, please. So we do a lot of, we attack this in a lot of ways. Stephanie will give a much more in-depth look at this. One of them is press releases and media. As we do in all media communications that involve life and safety, we do these press releases that are life and safety-related in English and Spanish. Like to thank Sandy Garcia and Mariana Gonzalez for being willing to translate for us, often on very short to no notice. We obviously cross-remote these press releases on social media. Caitlin Billharts handles that on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. I do that on the Nextdoor platform. I, I'd be less than candid if I didn't say that if you go to some of the posts that we've done, you'll see, you don't have to get too far into the comments before, particularly on face coverings and things that we're asking people to do differently before there's a significant amount of pushback and we'll talk a little bit about more about that later. We go to the next slide, please. So another thing that we are intent on doing is communicating internally with our employees. If you look at the numbers there, 38 exchange emails, video updates, both from City Manager Al Zelenka and from yourself, Mayor Bailey, internal text alerts, we're able to do these through Everbridge, which Riverside residents can sign up for. We highly recommend and ask them to do that. Can they get information about emergency situations that exist in Riverside? We also, in a partnership with Riverside County, are able to send alerts to everybody's cell phone within a geographic area, that area being the city limits of Riverside. We get, we use the texting system to also communicate with our employees, the ones that are in the office and the ones that are not. And if you look at the exchange emails, if you look at it and think we've been at this for about four months, that's about 80 workdays. So our employees are getting an email from us about every other day. We can always do better. We're always in the context of continual improvement. We're looking forward for feedback and looking forward to coming up with additional messaging in the future. Some of the things that we've talked about are trying to appeal to people's natural self-interest and tie things that they would like to see to the wearing of a face covering. There's some stats out that if everybody wore a face covering, we could reduce transmissions by 80%. So we're looking at messaging that, you know, if you want, if you want to go back to work and have everybody and your family back at work and earning your full wage, wear a face covering. If you want to go to a Dodger game or an Angel game this summer at some point, wear a face covering. Things that are important to you. If you want your kids to be able to go back to school so you don't have to spend the fall homeschooling them, wear a face covering. That'll be, those are all things that people want to see happen and will be greatly, greatly advantaged by the wearing of a face covering. So with that, I'll turn the rest of the presentation over to Marketing Officer Stephanie Harvey.
Thanks, Phil. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Stephanie Harvey, Marketing Officer. I oversee the activities of the Office of Communications. Day-to-day, the Office of Communications serves as an internal support division for all departments in the city along with driving the city's strategic communication efforts. Through the pandemic, our efforts have shifted as the need to communicate COVID-related information efficiently and effectively has become our priority. We've worked hard over the last few years to build the Riverside brand and also build a variety of no-cost communication channels. And as you'll see, this work is paying off. The Community, the Office of Communications alongside the Joint Information Center has worked tirelessly through this pandemic. Long nights, creative solutions and drastically increased volume doesn't even begin to describe the commitment level of my colleagues within the Office of Communications. I hope to keep the remainder of this update short, but also want to emphasize the critical work that this team is doing. We can go to slide five. First, I'll start with our web stats. On this chart, you can see the total website traffic for the last three months for our COVID information page along with the related COVID pages. These numbers are substantial. As a comparison, our entire site averages about 60,000 hits per month. We saw 10 times that number on these COVID pages alone in June. Next slide, please. This slide outlines the pages and associated topics that are available on the COVID-19 site. Through the hard work of both the business support team and the community support team, resources continue to be compiled and added to the site each day that support all aspects of our community and their needs. You can find these resources at riversideca.gov/covid-19. These web efforts could not be achieved without the work of Dr. Singh and Alyssa Elizondo and others. Next slide, please. As a combined effort with the business support group, we also established a robust resource list that includes local and state orders, guidelines and best practices from industry experts. This site also includes information for our business partners, working to provide support to the business community through webinars, financial resources and more. Lastly, the collective group stood up a business support map that features businesses that are currently opening and what services they're offering to the public. This map has received 143,000 hits since it was stood up, which is, which is a testament. which is a testament to our community's effort to support our businesses. You can find this map and the full list of business resources at riversideca.gov/business. Next slide, please. In an effort to deploy every communication channel available, we've also fast-tracked our email marketing program. You can see the total subscribers on each of our primary lists and samples of our recent sends on this slide. Under Amy Navas Lopez's direction, we've reestablished our citywide newsletter, created both a new RPU customer newsletter, and just a correction, that subscriber list should actually be 55,000, and provided support to our colleagues in community and economic development and their regular business email sends. As RPU has worked to come up with innovative programs to serve their most vulnerable populations, Christina Clavat has worked to ensure their messages are communicated broadly through our channels and continues to support RPU in their efforts. Next slide, please. Next, I'd like to highlight the work of Riverside TV Team. Under the leadership of Scott Rochus, in the last 80 business days, the Riverside TV Team has produced 79 videos, 51 in English and 28 in Spanish. As Phil mentioned earlier, those Spanish videos are any sort of life-death emergency messaging. Those videos have received over 1.8 million views on Facebook, 178,000 views on YouTube, and 27,000 views on watchriverside.com. Next slide, please. In addition to the production of videos, the Riverside TV Team with support from IT has also transformed how we conduct public meetings. From our first drive-through public comment to hybrid models with a variety of public comment options, accommodating dispersed councilmembers and staff, this team has pushed the limits and succeeded in offering a variety of options to support our council, board, and commission meetings. They've also increased the variety of viewing options for the public. Next slide, please. Next, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the creative work of Jovi Comercy and our graphics team and highlight the variety of visual messaging that has been developed through this pandemic. As far as our facility spaces, we've included samples of the work in action. From outside public places to internal office spaces, this group continues to drive branded cohesive messaging that is informational and impactful. Next slide, please. Social media is our strongest communication channel. In addition to her oversight of the graphics team, Caitlin Billharts also oversees our citywide social channels and has done a phenomenal job building the following, establishing the voice, and managing these channels since she started them roughly a decade ago. Her critical role through this unfortunate time should also not be ignored. She consistently rises to meet the needs of her colleagues within the department across the city. Her work on the social media and the data can best be showcased through the number of posts, volume, and the engagement with each post. With over 6.1 million impressions on Facebook alone, we know social media allows us to deliver messaging where folks want to hear it and still reach the community in which we serve. Social media also creates a two-way conversation in which we can interact and share with our community through dialogue and has become another customer service channel, such as a 311 call center or any public-facing counter. Next slide, please. We've talked a lot about digital channels, but we've also worked to ensure messaging reaches everyone, including those that may not have internet access or be connected through our digital channels. We've sent a variety of direct mail pieces in both English and Spanish to every one of our 110,000 households and businesses within the City of Riverside. We've also armed our field crews with printed materials to share with the public as needed and share these materials during food and meal distribution events. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see a variety of samples of the messages that have been placed on our three electronic signs, Auto Center, Marketplace, and University. These signs also seek to capture a non-digital audience and serve as one more way to reach our community. Next slide, please. In keeping with the theme of using every messaging surface possible, we've also installed signage on city vehicles, such as our transportation buses and garbage trucks, again, to share these critical messages as broadly as possible. Next slide, please. And to wrap it up, the last few months have demonstrated our team's abilities to reach our audiences time and again to reinforce these critical messages. When compiling the data, we assessed that on average, we've reached every Riverside resident and business owner at least 20 times. We know that communications is never done, never complete, and will continue to strive to show these critical messages to reach our community members. With the exception of staff time, we've achieved these results without spending any additional dollars. No advertising, no boosted social posts, just our built communication channels. As the situation continues to evolve, we will continue to provide timely, relevant messaging that supports the efforts of the entire city team. Some of the projects that are currently underway include updated PSAs and videos that will continue to drive awareness and hopefully enact behavioral change. You may have seen updated messaging that encourages Riversideers to mask up and follow best practices, including hand washing, keeping six feet apart, excuse me, and staying home when sick. The website will continue to be the best resource for up-to-date information about city facilities and include information from our partners at the county, state, and federal level. Lastly, as we teeter between response and recovery, know that our communication efforts are already outlined in the Second Wave Plan and Recovery Plans. In addition to the individuals I mentioned above, these efforts have been supported by a core group of professionals that make up the Office of Communications and a few honorary members. At this point, I'd like to thank my incredible colleagues once again and open it up for any questions you may have.
Comprehensive presentation there. Incredible amount of communication across all several platforms. We don't have a TikTok, I noticed yet, though.
I'm pretty sure it's reserved.
All right. I know for segments of the population, the younger population, that platform is very effective. Speaking for a father of the two teenage girls. Questions, comments, item five. I think we should start first with Mark Anis. Any questions, comments for Mark Anis? And a troubling trend that he shared with us in terms of hospitalizations and ICU. I have a question, Mark. Is Kaiser part of the data? Have they been sharing? I heard that they might. Are they sharing their data with the city and with the county?
Yes, so what we do is we get our data from the county, and then we group it all together as one.
So Kaiser Hospital is included in that data?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fiera and then Perry.
Thank you, Mark. Really quickly, do we have an estimate of how soon we feel hospitals' surge capacity will be full? And if so, what is the contingency plan for standing up these field hospitals, like the one at the old Sears side off Arlington? I know there's some others around the county. Are those, can those be stood up pretty quickly? Are we looking at hospitals being at surge capacity in a week, two weeks, three weeks? Is it happening right now? Just so we can have an idea of what we're looking at.
Here in the city, we are already experiencing surge capacity within our hospitals and healthcare systems. I can't speak for the rest of the county, the different hospitals, but many of them, I do believe, have implemented their surge plans, if not started going over capacity. But in terms of our hospitals, they have implemented the surge plans, which basically means they've already started converting regular hospital rooms into ICU rooms, which doesn't just mean the equipment, it also means the staffing. And right now, the county is focused on trying to assist the different hospitals with increasing their capabilities of increasing their surge capacity. That's the best thing to do is to increase where there already is the staffing, where there's already a hospital. The field medical stations are really, have been meant for more low-acuity patients, whereas where you're seeing the need is in the high-acuity levels, so the ICUs and so forth. So they're going to try to do the best to reach out to the hospitals and increase the capacity of that individual hospital or hospitals so that they can continue to build out the surge capacity within the hospital system and not necessarily the field medical stations at this point. That's, again, because of the staffing and the equipment that's already built into having a hospital, that's the best place to allocate some of these resources at this moment.
No, certainly. And I know the plan was always to convert hospital space into ICU and then anybody who was recovering or who was lower risk would go into the field medical stations. Okay, so what is the plan regionally in terms of, if someone in Riverside gets COVID and our hospitals are full, is there a plan in terms of how we're working with surrounding cities in the region as a whole to find hospital space for people? Because I know that if hospital space gets tight, there's going to be a lot of cities who want to keep that space reserved just for their citizens. Is there any issues with that, or currently is that whole situation amicable?
So that's all managed by the county in respect to how to move and transfer through the Medical Health Operations Center. So that's what we saw if we take the example of Imperial County and moving Imperial County patients into Riverside County and other surrounding counties. That's all through the Medical Health Operations Center to move resources where they need to be. And so that would be coordinated by the county and not necessarily at the city level. So they're talking to all the hospitals within Riverside County and getting daily updates of the data and knowing where the resources are needed and also knowing if need be where the transfers and so forth to help alleviate one healthcare provider to the next.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Perry, questions for Mark Anis first?
I have no questions for him.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you. Mark, can you remind me our doubling rate at this time, please?
I don't have the doubling rate right in front of me. Basically, what, you know what, I'll have it in just a second. Give me one second. So the doubling rate is basically from the very beginning is how the county is calculating it. So right now, we're at 24.7 days. But when we were at our lull, we were, I think, closer to 32 days. So it's been shrinking each day since, but obviously, it's not going to necessarily get back down to a six-day doubling rate like we had in the very beginning where it was concerning. So now you're looking at these more of these 14-day trends and the increases there. And that's kind of why we wanted to bring those to you, that, you know, at a 41% increase from where we were 14 days ago is concerning.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark Anis? Councilmember Lindrez?
Yes, I do. Thank you, all of you, for, Stephanie and Phil, for the report. This question is for Mark, and it has to do with the ICU and obviously going beyond what the original capacity is. For individuals that need to go to the emergency room or receive services that are non-COVID-19 related, what is, are they being impacted by the number of people going into our hospital system right now? So somebody goes in with an issue, I don't know, other type of issues, how is their service being affected or their immediate needs being provided?
Well, Councilmember, first off, I would say if they have a need to go to the hospital, they should go to the hospital. And where we're seeing the utilization is at the ICU rate. In terms of the overall hospitalization rate, we've been, it's been climbing up, but we're right in the low 70s to upper 60s in terms of the percentage there. So in terms of hospital beds that are available, if you need to go to the hospital and you need a bed, you've got that. The ICUs, at least here in the city, are, if they're at capacity, they still have the surge capacity. So they still have additional ICU capacity through that surge plan. So if people need to go to the hospital, they should. And when, you gave the example, if they needed to go to the ER, when they're going into the ER, they're going to get checked out prior to actually going inside. Temperature check, symptom check, and they're going to be asked different questions to see if they might be a suspected COVID patient. And then they'll be put in a different spot than if a non-suspected COVID patient.
So at this point, anyone who still needs services are able to get it? And they're not being impacted by the COVID-19 patients at this point?
Yes, sir.
Are we at risk of that happening, given the decline right now? If it continues to be consistent, are problems?
It is concerning in terms of being at surge capacity within the ICU system. Again, we obviously have our partners at the county to help coordinate transfers and through the other hospitals and so forth. But anytime that you have a ICU, any licensed capacity and then going into the surge, it is concerning because while we can somewhat limit the spread and the control folks from getting COVID-19 following the basics of wearing a mask, washing their hands, and social distancing, we can't necessarily control the auto accidents or a bus accident that has a large grouping of people that need major intensive care. And so this is one of those reasons why in the messaging, it's so important right now to let people know that they're not only doing this to stop from getting COVID or to help others from getting COVID, it's to assist with managing our healthcare system.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You got it. Any other questions? City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor Bailey, members of the council. The one additional item to follow up on Councilmember Fiera's question and to supplement what Mark Anis was saying is, Mark is working on behalf of the city management team to arrange a conference call with the CEOs of all the hospitals. We've been in individual conversations with them all along, and Mark is bringing us all together tomorrow or the next day to see how we can leverage some of our great communication work and other resources to help the hospitals and also just help secure and preserve our medical infrastructure since it's such an integral part of our city. So I just wanted to throw that in, and we'll report back as soon as we have that conference call.
Thank you for that update. All right, questions on the communications? For Phil Pitchford, the PIO, or Stephanie Harvey, the Communications Officer, Marketing Officer? Go back to Jim Perry, Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. You look at these numbers that our marketing team has produced, they're just simply staggering. They have done a great job through this entire ordeal. I know at the very beginning, I was able to interact with them quite a bit, especially March, April, and maybe a little bit into May. Their work, their dedication, the time and effort and efficiency has just been outstanding. They're everything that we're asking for in a marketing department. If they're not the best in the region, they may be the best in the entire state. You know, the work that you've done on communications and media, PSAs, branding, you've anticipated that great, in a great manner, especially at the beginning when things were changing almost hourly. You were keeping up on that without a blink of the eye. So your messaging's right on, and I just want to commend you for doing a great job. And you truly, all of you are truly great professionals and glad to have you here with the City of Riverside.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for the communications team? Down the row. All right, we'll keep moving on. Just, just clarify, so, so I know last week we, we talked about the message to the business community and getting signs up in businesses. Where are we with that? Is there a more specific update for that?
I can share an update on that. We, we sort of went back and forth last week. There was potential for the county to distribute signage. We learned that that is no longer the case, so we should have signs in the next day or two, to share with the business community.
All right. No further questions? Rafael Guzman, item six, rules, regulations created or suspended?
Yes, good afternoon, council and mayor. Rafael Guzman, Assistant City Manager. I have an update, a brief presentation on a newly amended existing local order. On June 2nd, the city council ratified an order allowing for outside dining to occur. This is a program that is available to all restaurants in the city of Riverside at no cost in a streamlined manner. And fast forward to last Wednesday, July 1st, Governor Newsom held a press conference. And during that press conference, one of the outcomes is that restaurants are no longer allowed to provide inside dining. With that, on the same day, I'm pleased to report that a team of talented professionals here at the city of Riverside met virtually within a couple hours of that press conference and had hashed out a amended restaurant flex program to allow for outside dining. And kudos to Mary Kapaski-Brown, city planner, Jennifer McDowell, our fire marshal, Chris Christopoulos, building official, Gil Hernandez, city engineer, Christie Smith, our city attorney, and Stephanie Harvey and Caitlin Billharts in our marketing team. Did an extraordinary job of helping to stand up a program literally within 24 hours, an amended program. And this amended program, again, is at no cost to restaurants that want to provide outside dining opportunities in conjunction with already allowed takeout, curbside service or delivery. Outside dining gives some expanded capacity and hopefully sends us, these restaurants a lifeline. They are still open for business, many of them, and are in dire need of customers. So we did our best to create a flexible streamlined, no cost program. And I think the quintessential part of it is that it is self-certified. If you're a restaurant owner, you simply need to fill out the application and submit that application and you can immediately commence outside dining here in the city of Riverside in three of four categories. I wanted to just briefly, since we had just finished talking about our marketing team, I'd like to give them some more kudos. Going to share our website. This is the website that Stephanie Harvey was referring to, the COVID-19 City of Riverside website. You can enter any of those words into a search engine, it will take you to this website. Once you're on the website, on the left, business resources, when you click on that page, it will take you to the temporary outdoor flex space permit program for restaurants. And this document, which is quite a thorough document, was created in about half a day. And in this table of contents, you'll see a cost section, which is no cost, it expires, the permit expires at the end of the emergency declaration, so it's valid during this current time. And there's really four categories. Category one involves outdoor dining on private property with no conflicts with pedestrians and vehicles. You fill out the application, you can commence immediately. Category two, which is also self-certified, allows for outdoor dining on public sidewalks, public plazas. Again, you can submit that application and commence immediately. The third category allows for outdoor dining on areas that, like a private alley, a private parking space, or private parking lot, things of that nature. Fill out the application and you can start immediately. The last category does require a little bit of review by our city team, but we guarantee it will be expedited. And that's for outdoor dining on city roadways, alleyways, or rights of way. So again, I want, like to commend our outstanding team for picking this topic up and standing it up immediately. That next day, our Director of Emergency Services, Al Zalinka, signed the amended order. The council will see this at your next council meeting. Because it happened on July 2nd, we were not able to meet the publishing deadline for today's agenda, but I did want to give a shout out to the team for their extraordinary work and make everyone aware of the resource, where you can find it. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Rafael Guzman, Assistant City Manager? Item six, Councilmember Perry? Nope, Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Rafael. I was just curious, it's a wonderful program, the flex program, and I know that many downtown business owners especially are very, very proud and impressed that we were able to stand that up so quickly, as am I. My question is, how many businesses are currently in the queue and are we seeing a range from across the city?
Good question. We are trying to compile those stats. I understand on day one, initially when we published the opportunity, there was about a half a dozen restaurateurs that applied for this and were self-certified. We've also had conversations with restaurants at the plaza and at the Galleria, both have expressed interest. And again, on the same day that the program was initiated, our marketing team pushed this out through various channels and we have been fielding questions since. So I hope to provide an update on the number of active participants at the meeting when we bring this back for ratification by the council.
Thank you. I look forward to those numbers.
Not to put him on the spot, but is our resident restaurateur, is he, is he using this? Councilmember, Councilmember Fierro, no? Good, just wanted to give you.
I try not to say much because it's personal for me, right? So I'm far from objective, but no, I think that making the flex space permitting streamlined is good. I think allowing people to pop up while they apply is good, especially since the governor's order to shut down indoor dining was immediate. So I think that's going to provide a lot of relief. A lot of businesses won't be able to build patios that match their aesthetic, but that's a sign of the times and the issues we have to deal with. So I applaud the city for doing this and I would hope that we will continue to find new and creative ways to allow businesses in our town to remain open while also minimizing the spread of COVID.
We appreciate your experience on the council. Yeah, Rafael?
Mayor Bailey, if I may, in regards to Councilmember Fierro's comments, we have begun exploring other business types that could take advantage of a similar program. You know, the, the first thing that comes to mind, and I know we had a question about this, is what if a, what if gyms, for example, which are currently allowed to open, what if they were closed by the governor or other entity? It's possible that they might want to take advantage of a similar type of program. So we are currently reaching out to different business sectors to see if this has applicability to other types of business services. So if you all have any ideas, we would be open. And I'm, again, so proud of the team of professionals we had. They acted so quickly and did an absolutely fantastic job putting this together. Thank you.
Hey, great work. I, I think I mentioned in the past, this retail, a lot of, of, seems like on TV, I've seen pictures of, of retailers, at least like clothes racks and things coming outside. I don't know about the aesthetics of that, but I think there's, there's opportunities for, for some retail to be moved outside. And then in terms of signage, have we, have we gone any, anywhere, made any, has there been any requests from businesses to expand their signage during this time?
In, in general, sorry, this is Rafael Guzman, mayor in general, or are you referring to the outdoor dining flex program?
No, no, in general, in general is, is another way to, you know, to support businesses. I know, I mean, we have signing ordinances for, for good reason, but during this time of difficulty for them, I'm sure that they would appreciate the ability to have more signage. I've seen some of them put, you know, their flags or, or whatever you call the, I, I think we have, maybe not intentionally, but we've relaxed, you know, some of the sign ordinances because I have seen more signs out. But has, has there been interest from the chamber or the downtown partnership or any, any businesses looking to promote themselves more through signage?
Great question, Mayor. Not to my knowledge, they were primarily and initially focused on the website map that Stephanie Harvey showed that has to do with businesses that are open. So some central location where folks can go and find businesses that are open. That was primarily the interest that we have received, both from businesses and from the community. So our focus has been on that business is open website. And it's, Stephanie showed, has just an extraordinary hit rate and continues to be a popular resource.
Are, are we, on the other side, are we, are we enforcing the, the sign ordinance? Have we, I don't know if you've, you've seen the increase in signage? I'm talking with sandwich boards and other signs that say open during COVID or otherwise. You know, I've seen, yeah.
Our focus has been primarily on life safety, Mayor. And if a sign or sandwich board for that matter is blocking a sidewalk in terms of accessibility or other requirements, that might be a, a matter for code enforcement to have a conversation with the business owner, but we have not been citing for the signage at this time.
Good, okay, I just wanted to, to, you know, as we've relaxed our ticketing and other, you know, governmental enforcement on, on that end at least, parking otherwise during this, this time. I know we've kind of, we're starting to, to ramp that up again and, and to communicate that to the public to make sure that they know what's, you know, what's being enforced again, just to make sure that that's part of the communication plan and/or, you know, if we want to relax the sign ordinance, then maybe that we should do that intentionally versus just, you know, through discretion. So it's just a, just a point. Any other, any other comment? Councilmember Edwards, did you have, did you already comment on this, sorry?
No more comments, thank you.
All right. One, one other thing that I was, I was hoping that we could get a little bit more on communications, at least an irregular update of city departments that are reopening and/or especially the, you know, the, the public facing entities like parks and libraries. Do we have any, anything coming open this week or next week that we can, we can announce today to the public or, or share with the public? Such as libraries, I know, I think there's a date coming up on that. But if we could be more, more regular, intentional, either during the pertinent health, safety and security updates or rules and regulations, somewhere in the communications, it would be good to, to have, you know, an update in, in terms of city departments that are either reopening or closing for that matter, if there is a, an issue out there. Library director?
Good afternoon, Mayor, this is Erin Christmas, library director. I am very excited to say that we will be starting library to go service at all of our library locations except the main library, starting on Thursday. Customers are able to call in today, or anytime, starting today, to place holds on books they would like to pick up. And they'll be able to pick them up starting on Thursday. The hours for that service are Tuesday through Thursday, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Love it. Libraries, back, back in business. I know, I know we have books in the library that, that we are probably in, we probably have fines for, I don't know, we've had too long the last couple of months, so I don't know if, I, I know, I know my, my family's eager to go back and, and drop off and pick up and order, so.
Yes, when you want to return books, you'll be calling the library, there's a phone number at the location you'll go to, that you can call and staff will be able to assist you outside with your transaction. That includes returns of library materials. There have been no fines or fees assessed on any materials over this extended closure of the libraries due to COVID. Also, if people have misplaced items, that sort of thing, we're being somewhat lenient on our rules, which is difficult for librarians to be lenient on. But we are working to, to be understanding during this time that it's been very, you know, it's very unusual time for everybody.
Well, thank you for that, thank you. On behalf of, of my family and others like us that, that tend to forget sometimes. Any, any other departments that are, there's Parks Director?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Adolpha Cruz, Director, Parks, Recreation, Community Services. This week, this week, we have all of our cooling centers open and they will remain open all week long. We anticipate that's going to be the case this week and probably next week. And then continuing on with the weather, we, we see that continuing quite a bit. As far as new, new programs that are going to be open, right now what we're focusing on is increasing our maintenance at several of our parks. During this time, we've focused on, on, some of our priorities have been graffiti, trash removal, and some of the larger maintenance projects now we are focusing on. Some of the detailed, detailed plant work in the, you know, flower beds in the parks are looking a little, little shabby, so we're going to be gearing up, gearing up with that. The golf course remains open, beginning next week. We will be closing on Wednesdays at the golf course and that will be a heavy cleaning day, give our staff a, a break on that day and, and focus on cleaning. The other area that we're focusing right, right now and should have a plan, have some dates in the next couple of days, is our splash pads. Our splash pads are being, our, our staff are working on those now, resetting the timers. In the past, when you touch the, the, the little button to turn it on, the water would stay on for about three, three to four minutes. We're looking to extend that time so that it's minimal, minimal times that the kids have to touch the, the, the button and setting up some, getting those up and running. We're also working on, on the playgrounds. So with the playgrounds, we're looking at providing an opportunity to sanitize the playgrounds on a daily basis. And the ones that we can sanitize on a daily basis, we would deem open. So while they are allowed by, by the state, they are recommended, we are recommended to follow some cleaning protocols. And so that's what we're trying to, to get to so that we can safely open those and have our splash pads up and running. And, and that's all we're, we're, we're working on right now, Mayor.
That is awesome. That is awesome. Good to hear. Lots of questions have been, I know, sent to the electeds on, on splash pads, especially during the, the hot, hot weather that we're, that we're undergoing right now, as well as the cooling centers for seniors. I see, the city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to announce that Passport Services is reopening. It will be by.
It will be by appointment only rather than the walk-in service we had previously provided in order to ensure social distancing. Appointments can be made by calling 951-351-6334. Thank you.
Can you give us a reminder in terms of parking enforcement? I know that that has been rolled, any other, any other, any other departments that feel free to chime in? But specifically, I know parking enforcement has been one that we've been kind of reinstituting? Can anybody speak to that?
Mayor Bailey, Al Zalinka, your City Manager, on, in terms of parking enforcement, this morning I had a, or this weekend I had an inquiry on it as well. There's been widespread communication about parking enforcement coming back online on July 1st. June 17th, City Council supported resuming parking enforcement. 618 staff reached out to Mayor and Council about the phased approach to begin. Stephanie Harvey updated the city's website on the 18th as well. And through social media, Caitlin Billharts did the same on the 18th. And Phil Pittsburgh also communicated through Nextdoor. From the 18th of June through the end of June, the city issued warnings, citations only. As a side note, citations related to safety concerns, red curb, fire hydrants, double parking and the like were never suspended. It was just most of the others. As I recall from the input from Public Works Department, team members, the need to begin parking enforcement again is at least in part, if not largely driven by our need to comply with our stormwater management obligations. And street sweeping is a key part of that. So either Rafael Guzman or any members of the Public Works team can add to what I've just summarized.
Yeah, that was great. Code enforcement as well, is that the same timeframe in terms of warning violations through June? And then code violations began again in July?
Rafael, do you want to touch on code enforcement?
Yeah, it followed the exact same cadence, code enforcement and in our Community Economic Development Department and Public Works, parking enforcement that I'll just refer to, were on the exact same cadence, so ditto.
Any other departments rolling something on or rolling something off?
Mayor Bailey, if I could, real quick, I'd like to share my screen. I think it's important that we, that we point out that on our city website, when you click the COVID-19 update bar, you can scroll down and go to City Facilities and Services. And in real time, the open facilities are listed with lots of detail. And then the closed facilities with status updates are also noted. So as the City Clerk noted, as Erin Christmas noted, as Adolfo noted, there's different components on here and we will update them as we get more information about facilities coming online. So that's a helpful resource for the public.
Beautiful. Thank you for that reminder and putting that on the screen. All right, we'll keep moving with the public hearings this afternoon. Items seven, eight and nine are public hearings, beginning with Matthew Taylor, item seven. His been long in the process here. I believe it's some way response to some changes at the state, but also some innovative approaches that we have integrated and found, you know, here in our city. And so Matthew's going to bring us up to speed on zoning code amendment to update accessory dwelling unit, family daycare homes, et cetera.
Yes, that's right. Thanks. Good morning, good afternoon, Mayor Bailey and Honorable Members of the Council, Matthew Taylor, Senior Planner. So the item before you this afternoon is a suite of proposed amendments to the zoning code related to, as you said, accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, family daycare homes and tiny homes. I will just say before I begin, this is a very extensive update to the zoning code. It touches about 18 chapters. I'm going to keep it very high level so that we can get through this. And then I'm happy to answer any detailed questions that you have about the specific amendments that we're proposing after the presentation. Next slide, please. Okay, so for background, recently enacted state legislation and new policy emphasis on housing affordability and housing production has necessitated some amendments to the code. Assembly Bills 68 and 881 in particular have altered local jurisdictions' duties and responsibilities to regulate and facilitate construction of accessory dwelling units. Separately, Senate Bill 234 has changed city's ability to establish regulations for home-based daycares for up to 14 children. And then finally, to facilitate the city's participation in the Invest Health Grant, modifications to the city's regulations for tiny homes, mobile home parks and manufactured homes are also proposed. So this presentation has been divided into those three parts as shown here. Next slide, please. Okay, Part A, accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units and junior ADUs are an opportunity to create low-cost, low-impact new housing within our existing neighborhoods. So in December 2017, the council approved the housing element, which included new ADU provisions to streamline their development. And later that year, the state adopted new ADU laws that became effective in 2018. And then in February of 2019, the council approved amendments to ADU regulations to comply with those new regulations from the state. Then later that year, in October of 2019, the state amended the ADU laws again to eliminate barriers to constructing ADUs and JADUs. So right now, where we are at is we are again amending the zoning code to implement the changes that state law have required. I do want to make it clear that these regulations are currently in effect. Under state law, this law is operative. So this is an update to our code just to achieve consistency. So the proposed amendments to the code touch the following chapters. I'm sorry, can I have the next slide, please? And I'll go through some of the high-level amendments to those chapters. If I could see the next slide, please. All right, so broadly, the updated regulations, they allow ADUs in all residential zones, including mixed-use zones. They allow ADUs on lots developed with existing or proposed single or multifamily units, which is a change from previously. And they allow junior accessory dwelling units, which I'll explain what those are, within the walls of an existing or proposed primary dwelling. So an accessory dwelling unit is a fully self-contained dwelling unit that is... They're called accessory because they are ancillary to the primary dwelling that exists on the lot. A junior ADU is sometimes called an efficiency unit or a mother-in-law quarters. And those are contained within the walls of an existing primary dwelling unit. So under the new laws, a property developed with an existing single-family home can have up to one accessory dwelling unit and one junior accessory dwelling unit. Multifamily properties can also have a certain number of accessory dwelling units added to them as well. Owner occupancy, so we are no longer requiring occupant, owner occupancy of the property for a property developed with a primary dwelling in an ADU. We will still require owner occupancy of one of the units for a property developed with a junior ADU. And the same goes if a property is developed with a primary dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit. It's the junior ADU that will trigger the owner occupancy requirement. Parking, we are exempting ADUs and JADUs from the requirements to provide parking dedicated to that unit. We're also no longer allowed to require replacement parking if a garage or other covered parking space is converted to an ADU. And then impact fees. The assessment of impact fees for the development of an ADU or JADU is limited proportionally to the actual increased need for service that that ADU or JADU creates. Okay, next slide, please. So Part B is family daycare homes, the Keeping Kids Close to Home Act. So currently, the city regulates small and large family daycare homes located in single-family zones. Small family daycare homes have six or fewer children and are permitted by right. You still have to get a license from the state, but the city does not require a permit. Large family daycares have seven to 14 children and again, require a license from the state and also require a city daycare permit. So in September of 2019, SB 234 was adopted, which as of January of this year, now requires that local jurisdictions treat family daycare homes up to 14 children as the same as any other permitted residential use, just like a house. Next slide, please. So the proposed amendments here update a number of chapters of the zoning code to reflect those updated regulations and achieve consistency for family daycare homes up to 14 children. Next slide, please. Okay, so some of our base zone chapters are updated to just reflect that family daycare homes are permitted anywhere a residential dwelling is permitted, in single-family zones. And we've updated the code to remove the requirement for a discretionary daycare permit approval. Other chapters amended are the Family Daycare Home Chapter, which is deleted, the Parking and Loading Chapter, which is just updated to be consistent, and the Approving Appeal Authority for Family Daycares and the definitions, just to achieve consistency with the state laws. Next slide, please. All right, Part C, tiny homes and tiny home communities. So currently, under the code, these are very narrowly defined as a dwelling mounted on a chassis that meets specific design and licensing requirements. And they're only allowed as an incidental use to assemblies of people non-entertainment, such as a church or fraternal organization. And so one of the things that we're doing in collaboration with the Invest Health Grant Program is to try to increase the opportunity to use tiny homes and tiny home communities as an opportunity to provide lower-cost housing. Next slide, please. So these amendments expand how tiny homes and tiny home communities can be created and are regulated in the city. Next slide, please. So we're doing two things. One is establishing the tiny home on a foundation. And then the other is establishing the tiny home on a chassis. And we're regulating them slightly differently. So tiny home communities on a foundation, which is a grouping of small homes placed on a permanent foundation, and manufactured dwellings, which would be a factory-built home, will now be allowed in the multifamily zones. The idea here is that you can now, in a zone where you could build an apartment building, you could also build a group of small homes that all are on the same lot. We're updating our minimum unit sizes to be consistent with the California Building Code. Parking and loading, we are adding to the Parking and Loading Chapter that one space is required per unit for a tiny home and a tiny home community or otherwise. And then this change to the Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone is intended to allow tiny home communities on chassis to be established through the application of an overlay zone that we would currently use to allow the construction of a mobile home park. So the idea is that we would treat these similarly to mobile home parks when the tiny homes are on a chassis. And so the changes to that are to allow that overlay zone on a lot of any size, as long as it meets the minimum of the base zone that it's in. Currently, a mobile home park requires a minimum of 10 acres. You can now put that overlay zone on a smaller lot, as long as it meets the minimum requirements. And adding that tiny home communities on chassis are in allowed use with a CUP in that zone at a density of 20 dwelling units per acre. Some other changes, ordinance here, allowing manufactured dwellings in the multifamily zones, changing the design review requirements for manufactured homes to allow the Community and Economic Development to approve that design review rather than the Development Review Committee, just to streamline that. And then updating definitions just to achieve clarity and consistency and make sure everything matches up. Next slide, please. All right, so the proposed amendments were considered by the Planning Commission at a public hearing on March 5th of this year. Motions made to recommend that the council approve Parts A for the ADUs and JADUs and Part B for the Family Daycare Home Amendments did not pass. And a motion to recommend that the council approve Part C for tiny homes and tiny home communities did pass unanimously. These proposed amendments will ensure that the code remains consistent with state law that is already operative and that ensures that the city can remain compliant with those laws. And it does also have the effect of promoting a diversity of types and approaches to creating affordable housing in the city in a number of different and creative ways. So therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the council determine that this planning case is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. That the council approved the planning case for the zoning code amendment based on the findings that we presented and are contained in the staff report and introducing subsequently and adopt in ordinance amending the zoning code to that end. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as is Principal Planner Dave Murray and Assistant Building Official.
Any clarifying questions before public comment? Councilmember Melendez?